Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Rife.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andresek.
Here.
And Mayor Ciara.
Here. Perfect. Any reordering of the agenda tonight?
No, ma'am.
Any public comments? This is your time to speak up. Fill out a yellow slip. Okay?
Call in.
I'm closing public comment. Moving on to the consent calendar. We have item one, minutes of May 11, 2017, regular city council meeting. List of claims to be approved or modified for payment to date for fiscal year 2016-17. Revenue and expenditure reports through April 30, 2017. Do I have a motion or any polls?
Yeah. Carol and I, well, do you want to just speak, Carolyn, or?
Regarding which item?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding item number two.
Okay. And your question on item two?
MNS has not filed any check register for, I think, two months now?
Any invoices?
Any, thank you.
We haven't received invoices from them.
For two months. So.
There's, well, councilmember called today and just asked, you know, why there weren't any. So from a finance director perspective, we just wait for the invoices to come in. And so they hadn't come in. However, Rose just let me know there is one in the queue. So it's coming in. So there's one coming.
Okay. Copy.
And I just signed a big check yesterday to MNS.
Okay. So that will probably be on the next register.
That was from the last one.
So it looks like we'll get one on the next register.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Linda?
Through three.
Okay. Let's see. Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Rife.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andresek.
Aye.
And Mayor Ciara.
Aye. Thank you. Any presentations tonight?
No, ma'am.
Any public hearings tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Moving on to councilmember comments/items. This is where you can talk about anything that's going on in town or anything you'd like brought back to council. Councilmember Rife, anything for you?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember King?
Yeah. I'd like to look into an RFP for a planning director. Budgeted for Mark Fleebing, so it's going to be a long process to do that. So I think we should probably get that moving.
To hire a planning director?
See, Mark's leaving. Are you not retiring?
No.
No?
No. When I announce retirement, then I think it's appropriate time to hire both of those. So.
Well, I see that we had budgeted for it, so I wondered why we had budgeted for that.
Because, and we've have every year since I've been planning director and city manager, just to have that, so we don't lose it. So it's always there. We just don't use the money for that. So if there's at one point when I do retire, the money in the position is still budgeted and still there, so you can hire the planning director and the city manager.
Okay. Stand corrected.
Okay.
All righty. Vice Mayor Andresek, any comments/items?
Yes, Madam Mayor. At the last meeting, I neglected to, I had had three items. I should have had four. And I wanted to recognize a Bulton resident and school teacher, fifth grade school teacher at Oak Valley Elementary School. Jennifer Klein was awarded a name, the county's Teacher of the Year. And she's in queue for more recognition. She'll be entered into it. And I felt silly that I didn't remember to mention that.
Unfortunately, her award ceremony is at the Marriott right now.
Oh, really?
So we are not able to be there to acknowledge her, but yeah.
Personally congratulate her, I think as probably everybody that's ever seen her.
Her bulldog, Luna, and my dog are best buds.
Oh. Priorities.
Yeah.
You have connections.
I have, I know Jennifer, yeah. Really sweet.
And then the other item we've already discussed, for councilmember comments.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted a couple things. First of all, I wanted to comment on Earth Day.
Oh, yeah.
Last Sunday, and what a wonderful event it was. First of all, most importantly, is a thank you to Eva Powers for putting this together because it took months of work and it turned out really well. I'd like to thank Rose and her family for coming and setting up a booth with Public Works. Mary from MNS who came down and gave away wastewater items, quizzes, and also to city manager, Mr. Beardzinski, for bringing his electric vehicle to put on display. It was a really well-done event, and I just want to make sure that thanks go to the right people. I also need to make an announcement that councilmember Connolly has given notice. June 22 is his last meeting, and Linda is going to get going on recruitment for another council member. We'll have to see when we can get this done. It'll be either the end of, at the June 22 or perhaps the July 13 meeting. And that council, lucky council member will be able to sit on, up at the dais when we decide, go back to the RV ordinance. So we've appreciated everything councilmember Connolly has given to the City of Bulton, and June 22 is his last day.
Good introduction, Madam Mayor. Good introduction.
That's it. Committee, written communications?
No, ma'am.
Committee reports?
I, you would, did you do the T-TAC?
I did not do T-TAC. I usually don't go to T-TAC, but you've filled in.
Typically, I would have the report on CCWA. This month, there was not a sufficient number of agenda items, so they called off our CCWA meeting. But I did attend the SB CAG and APCD meeting in your stead.
Greatly appreciated.
And they, the one thing that I brought along for the people, for the council, their Measure A was a big topic. There was quite a bit of discussion about it. But I brought for each of us to have, and some for city, for city hall, for people that are interested in Measure A.
Do you guys want to?
In the, in page.
He's not coming tonight.
Two, there's a sidewalk makeover. Nice photo op for the Bulton streetscape. And it's, when completed, the side docks will enhance the entire streetscape, and will include lighting, tree wells, and reconstructed driveways and curb ramps. And I, I mean, you would have to be, poor vision if you aren't aware that that's what's going on. But it's in progress. And then I did want to, at the last meeting, I asked that we do a progress charter to explain where we're at at the kiosk. And so I've been down to the kiosk, and whoever cleaned it up, it's beautiful. It's nice and clean, but we don't, still don't have our timeframe, there was a, I thought I brought it with me, but I guess I left it somewhere. The timeframe and exactly what, where they're beginning at 101 and going out to Dominguez Road. So I would hope that we could, we could just have it maybe blown up and.
Yeah, I apologize. You did bring that up at the last meeting, so we'll make sure it's up there.
I mean, the kiosk is clean, I mean, there are no cobwebs. And I think it'd be a good focal point for people, and.
It's a great idea.
So thank you for taking care of that. But it's a nice, nice presentation, SB CAG really does good presentations.
And thank you very much for attending for me.
You're welcome.
Mr. Beardzinski and I went down to Santa Barbara City Council Monday for their two o'clock meeting, and we were trying to delay the 140% increase at our administrative costs for the library. They did not make a decision they plan on making at June 12. There were quite a few people that spoke regarding the same issue that pretty much want to see either that it's held off until the county's study of library funding is completed, or until, or to break it into a two-to-three-year increment. According to the City of Santa Barbara, we are subsidizing, they are subsidizing us, even though we didn't know that when we joined them two years ago. And anyway, any additional comments?
And subsidizing all the other branch libraries as well, so.
Correct.
And some of those didn't supposedly know that as well.
Lot of shock there. I truly appreciate you going down with me. Thank you.
Are they, I'm sorry, may I ask a question? Are they still subsidizing us?
According to them, they are.
Even after the 140% increase?
After, according to them, it will still be a subsidy.
There will still be a subsidy.
How, so what, I guess what I'm asking is, are they going to gradually sunset the subsidy in part?
Yes. Yes. And.
So what's our final cost?
Well, we're going to have to start looking, we've, city manager and Carolyn have put in that increase into the budget, and hopefully we can get it delayed, so there will be, we won't need that kind of funding. We're not in a position right now to go off anywhere else, so we're kind of stuck.
And we may get some offsets from the reserves they have, as well as the money they didn't spend for the supervisor this year rolled over. So the money we've budgeted for the library, I think is more than enough to accommodate the increase they're proposing if it is phased and the savings we have received.
Yeah, but I doubt we would have made the move in the first place.
Correct.
If we had knowledge of the sub quote subsidy, close quote.
Absolutely. I, yeah.
So what, is there, is there another, I'm not trying to belay this to the topic, but maybe, is there another, I mean, I hate to say it, but is there another avenue?
Yes. I mean, not this year, but Galita has talked about going off on their own, and they would be very interesting, interested in picking up Bulton and solving. Santa Maria Library seems to work a lot better than Santa Barbara, and there's an opportunity for conversation to try to hook up with them. I'm starting to feel like the ugly stepchild. Lompoc didn't want us to go to Santa Barbara, and basically the library director there says, if you don't like this, perhaps you should find another place. So I'm feeling like the step.
So let's find another place.
Yeah.
Sounds like my job every single day. No problem.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, so are we, oh, I'm sorry.
No.
So are we actively, I guess, I get this year.
No, we're going to wait until they get their budget together. There were a couple councilmembers, one there, another one who left early, who I believe feels the same way, that they just need to rip the Band-Aid and charge us. And most everybody else, I got the impression that they were willing to do it over a two-to-three year period. So it wasn't quite as painful. And in that time period, we have an opportunity to start figuring out what we're going to do, because libraries are so important. But, I mean, it just gets more, you expect it, you expect it to get more expensive, but not like this.
Right. I mean, I get it how we need to fix, this year's a problem, Roger, but we can't let that continue past the next.
Correct.
Okay. So what?
So June 12, I will be going back down. I don't know if you plan on going too.
I can go with you.
Can we actively be looking at partnerships with other cities while we're sorting out the phasing and fighters?
Let's finish this off, and then the county's doing a study on library services county-wide to look at options, and we'll participate in that, so.
And that study should take about three months. So we should be in with plenty of notice for next year. But yeah.
I just don't want us to be caught with our hands tied.
It is an issue, and we are.
So Mark, don't want us to be caught with our hands tied. I'm not a fan of government studies, considering I work for the government.
Well, this will help determine different phases.
Well, contractors are involved, three months turns to six months, and six months turns to eight months, and then we're back where we started.
We will become a little more proactive. We, I think every library would love for the county to take it over, and the county just does not want to take on the libraries.
Got it.
So.
Sorry to belabor, thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's the issue. Okay. Any other committee reports?
Madam Mayor, I was going to, regarding APCD, there was a short presentation of a DVD that had been prepared, protecting blue whales and blue skies. It's a seven-minute DVD. They offered anyone that wanted a copy of it. I asked that they send us two of them. Perhaps we could give one to the library, and it could make its way around the school. It just talks about the ships on the channel and.
What a great idea.
And the blue whale. So if City Hall gets a couple of DVDs.
Santa Barbara County APCD has made an impact.
Yes.
It is making an impact.
Yeah. And they, I think they have grants, so they're motivated with those sorts of things.
Okay.
But it was a nice DVD, and I thought it should be shared by.
Again, thank you for attending that meeting for me. Any other councilmember comments/items, or, excuse me, committee reports? Moving on to business items. Item four, resolution number 17-07, a resolution of the city council of the City of Bulton, California, adopting the biennial fiscal year 2017-18 and 18-19 budget. Finance Director Cooper Galloway, Galloway Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So last week, on our last meeting, we went over the budget study session and went in detail through the budget. Tonight, we won't do that. Well, it's basically, I'd like to summarize what we did last time, which is really basically my staff report. Last time, you gave us some changes, and staff also went back and checked, checked balances and what have you. And so we made the changes that we made, and we added changes that the council made and whatever, the public, whoever, and have listed all those changes. So we will move on to the, basically, council can let me know if there's any additional changes. Before we go there, I just want to say that we, staff has made one more change that we don't, haven't included here. And that would be, we are going to move the expenditures that were in the general fund, public works engineering, those expenditures, that's 001-557, those expenditures at $100,000 are going to be moved to gas tax. We, those are, those are gas tax, legitimate gas tax expenditures, they should be there. We put them in general fund because we weren't sure on the revenue piece, whether gas tax was going to have enough. And it turns out that we received $250,000 from SB CAG. It relates to Measure A and Caltrans indirectly. I'll let, I'll let Rose explain that, but.
Yes, that's our recall for this Highway 246 project. The city's share of, or payment was $500,000. $250,000 of that was a reimbursement to us from SB CAG from the Measure A regional pot. So that's the monies that has come in, that made back available to our gas tax and our Measure A funds.
Okay.
Is there a specific gas fund, fund that goes to from 001-57 to?
To, fund 025.
025.
So we'll record those expenditures in 025. We'll credit a revenue, well, actually, the revenue is this year, so that'll increase the fund balance, beginning fund balance. So we'll take, it's all taken care of. So that would, that would increase our surplus from 122, is in my staff report, to 222. Our surplus is now 222 in the general fund. And then any changes that the council makes, we can add that in or take it out, whatever, whatever happens. And then I just want to reiterate one thing or make clear that the sales tax in one, in my staff report on the budget study session, I said it increased 10%. It was a, we made, it was a 3% increase that we increased it, and that was based on HDL. So that should have been 3%, so that you're not confused on that one.
Okay.
And we always go by the consultant HDL because they do all the research, so.
Even with the new businesses, we're still expecting only a 3%?
That's what they said. With the new businesses, what they do is, they will meet with us again, and they will update us in about three months. So at mid-year, we'll, if we have any changes with that, I would expect that it would go up higher than that, too. But at this point, we have to just go with what they conservatively estimate.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'm finished with my report, and we will take all the information from council.
Okay. Not quite sure how to handle this. We have one public comments, one public speaker, and most of what we have up here, what I have up here are questions. So maybe we could have our public speaker come and then close that and go back. I've got, I've got a few notes, so, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. So I'm going to open it up for, to the public, and I have Peggy Brierton.
Thank you, Mayor Ciara, councilmembers. I've been here for a while, so.
Welcome.
I'm here tonight to ask for more money to be placed and allocated in the bike and trail fund. Communities that rank high in walkability are more desirable to live in, visit, and invest money in. So it's a win-win all the way around. When the economy does turn down, the communities that have a walkability, high rate of them, trails, good sidewalks and everything else, they, they're pretty stable in bad times economically. And the bike and trail fund is also highly desirable by the community. Came in very high marks with, during the community visioning, and continues to be highly wanted. I was encouraged to see the feasibility and then the conceptual plan that is being, I guess is going to be happening along that, the portion of the River Trail. I think that is a wonderful thing to hear and see. And I understand that that is what's required and needed, first of all, in order to even apply for grants. So, I mean, this is the next step that we have to take. And so happy to see that. But that's going to deplete the fund. This will pretty much closely, pretty much delete the trail and bike fund that we've got. And the SB CAG money going in, it's just not enough. And relying on the developers to create their portion of the trail when they develop, that's not enough. As we have seen, all developers are not always building their trail along their property, flying flags. When they are redeveloping their property there, they only allocate and mark the land. They didn't have to build the trail system. We're going to have to do that. So while you can pull money from the general fund when something comes about, and you can say, oh, you know, we're going to apply for this grant, we can apply, go to the general fund, and we can pull some money from that, we have the trail fund. You know, that's what it's there for. You know, we need to plan. And I think, you know, we need to add some more. Very encouraging to hear that we can add another $100,000 to the surplus, although, you know, obviously with the library discussion that just happened a few minutes ago, you know, there's, there's not enough money to go around. So we know that. But, you know, we can take a portion of the 17% of the property tax that we get because, you know, it's directly related to the shoring up and the prices of our property with our walkable community. Or we can take some of that extra surplus and apply that to the trail fund. But I would really appreciate a discussion and consideration to add more money to the, to the trail fund plan for this budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. I was talking to our finance director and assistant Chanel and Carolyn, and I've gone through and I have been nitpicking at our budget because I would like to see more money put into the trails and also the cash-for-grass program that seemed to be very, very popular in the community. We haven't set aside any money for that, so.
Where is, I see that, I see it in the CIP. Is there a trail budget elsewhere?
There, it's actually in the LTF fund 027, local transportation fund, and it's, it comes in as a bikes and trails revenue source, so we would just put that in there in the general fund.
That 20,000, the 20,000 is it right now. That's the only thing we've got right now.
So what's?
That's the plans, it's the 20,000 in the CIP for plans for a proposed bike trail or walking trail.
So it's not the same as River Trail?
It's, it's the same thing.
It is the same thing?
Well, the fund Carolyn's talking about, that's where we have, that's the source we're putting the set aside on. So the River.
Maybe just, I'm sorry to interrupt. I get it where the CIP is. I didn't know if you were familiar with that. Where is the other section?
It's, okay, that would be under other funds, and it's 027. So behind.
Page 149.
Thank you. You knew I was getting that.
Bikes and Trails Reserve.
All right. So, so help me a little. Help me a little. What is this? Vice vis a vis, what is the $70,000 spent in this fiscal, budgeted for this upcoming fiscal year under the San Inez Trail?
Okay. And so you're talking about the San Inez Trail, 70,000 in the, in the capital improvement section?
There's, yeah, there's 50 for one thing and 20 for another, and then there's.
Yes. Rose is going, we're going, we're going to the capital improvement section now?
Okay.
Yeah. It's in the very last.
So line 207 and 208.
This is the page 159. And then he's going back to the CIP. He's going back to the CIP.
So we'll explain those two.
Okay.
And just give us a minute.
Yeah, no problem. So to answer, just to respond, Peggy, so I get it, we saw your line above, it looks like there isn't a little, there isn't a lot allocated, but in the capital improvement project, we have $70,000 allocated to the San Inez River Trail, which I'm assuming is the same thing. So, so if it's not, then we'll discuss it, I would hope.
Yeah.
But I would think $70,000 would be a good expenditure. Considering we are hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in pulling from reserves to cover water and wastewater this year.
That and the other money taken out of reserves for our CIP projects. That's why, that's why, honest to goodness, I mean, I know that this is really nitpicky, but I, I'm trying to shave off what I can to put into this cash-for-grass and more money into the trails. I hadn't been paying much attention to it, honestly, my fault. But when Leo got up and made his farewell speech, he reminded me of priorities that residents had asked for. And so I've been looking over this, and hopefully, hopefully we can do something.
So, so we can explain.
Okay.
So looking at, I don't see a 70,000. I see 20,000 for the feasibility study in 17-18, and a continued 20,000 in, in the future years.
So there's an environmental design, line 207.
And the environmental design is 150.
So line 207 and line 208 combined, oh, sorry, maybe I'm, oh, no, I got to zoom in. It's just 20 grand. I'm sorry.
It's 20,000. That's all we have. That's all we're planning right now.
Yeah, it was the line above.
Yeah, my fault. Okay, my fault.
You threw us off on that one.
Sorry.
We're back on track. Thank you.
But these are all the same? This is the same?
Yes. And so, that's all the same project. We had just broken it out.
159.
On those different, on the different phases. And I believe when we, when we did the modification to provide the more details you had requested on the different capital improvement projects.
Right.
That we consolidated that information.
Okay.
So that you can see it's one project, just the different phases of it. But in that table, it just happens to be separated.
Okay. So what's the, what's the four grand in the other line?
That's how much?
That's on page 149.
The 3960.
Page 139?
Spikes and Trails Reserve.
Oh, he's. Oh, he's, yeah. Okay. Bikes and Trails Reserve. So those are the, that's, we correspond that line with LTF money that we receive from SB CAG. So that is all that we get from SB CAG, so that's what we're showing as monies that we're going to put into the bike fund. Yeah, sort of a reserve within the fund.
And here's my thing. With most of the property at the bottom of industrial sold, and we have the River Trail portion of the golf course that belongs to the city, we are in a position where we actually could be doing more than just planning. We could actually start something, which has been a long time coming. And it would be nice to have some funds. I mean, if we can get matching funds and grants, so much the better. But I think residents are getting tired of saying, this is what we see in our vision. And then, like Avenue of Flags, it just takes forever to materialize. So that's my little cuts.
But just to, if we could, I think we have some contiguous parcels, too. When we first started, we had like one piece, and then there was one more piece, but it seems to me we have five or six contiguous pieces that could, and then, of course, the acquisition of the golf course made, moved out of real linear footage for us.
Right. The only two we don't have in process would be the Willenson and the Moore Jerkowitz properties.
But that's at Riverview Park. From industrial, we do have total access now to build a trail, to start a trail.
That is correct.
Yeah.
I'm not, so, please, I love the idea, but I'm fairly opposed to the blanket approval of extra money, given the huge reserves coming out to cover water and wastewater. I mean, we're talking to almost like a million dollars that we literally don't have in our budget. So I get it, I'm game for it, but let's find other places to shift. So if we.
Exactly. I found places.
All right, let's do it.
I found places.
Let's do it.
I talked to Carolyn and Chanel, and they said, bring it up to you guys, and, you know, consensus moves it. So if we have no more questions in general with Carolyn, we're just going to start by department and work through it. When we get to city council, which is our first, page 6970, item number 72200 and 72300, we have city council office furniture and computer equipment totaling $3,000. I'd like to take that out. We've had, we haven't, we just bought some computer equipment, and I don't think we need to. At this point, what we have is working just fine. We're not in a position to go out and buy another $2,000 worth of computer equipment. That's really, really not necessary.
The only problem is, Mayor, is if something happens to one of yours, then we do have to buy it, and I guess we could shift money at mid-year.
That's what I'd like to do. If that's okay with council.
Which one was that?
Page 70?
100 calories.
Line 72200 and 72300. We've got a $1,000 and $2,000 item that I, if you're looking at it, we really don't use it that much, and I think we can get by for another year. If it does become an emergency item, then I'm sure that money can be shifted around since that does get done during the year. Okay. So then we go to the next category is city manager. If anybody has anybody they want to add to it, please. I'm looking at page 73 now. City manager, we have another $500 proposed in office furniture. I don't think we need that. City manager's willing to give that one up?
Yes.
Thank you. Then we go on to our city clerk, and that's page 76. And I, again, these are just little wittles, but I think that they can add up. If you go to miscellaneous, which is item number 60900 on page 76, we have $1,000 proposed. 290 is spent this year, 353 last year. I'd like to knock that to 500.
Let's do it.
Okay.
What page?
That was page 76.
What about the, what about the, what about the office furniture?
In the second year?
I think we could knock that off the second year, too.
Did you have a plan? Didn't you just buy more furniture, I thought?
I bought a desk.
Do you need more furniture?
I.
I'm just asking, I don't know.
No, I mean, I don't right now. I used existing from where I was and moved it over to where I am, so.
I'm not trying, I'm not trying to leave you on the floor, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I mean, I'm making do with what I have.
Okay, copy.
Thank you. Let's see. Councilmember King wants to go back to city manager.
I just had a question about, Madam Mayor, about operating and maintenance was actual 1,500, and then the proposed is 4,200. Was there something coming up on page 72?
Well, we budgeted 4,150 the prior year, and now 4,200, so it's basically staying the same.
But last year, the actual spending was 15, and it's now budgeted for 4,200.
But that's only for a portion of the fiscal year. We haven't finished the fiscal year.
We're almost done. Can we cut that to 3,000?
But that's made up of the categories over here on page 73.
Yeah.
So that's where the 4,200 comes from, and it's basically, I'm keeping this.
Travel and training is the one that's bumped up.
Well, it's the same. I just didn't do any travel and training because I spent things for other things this year. So the travel and training is 2,500. You can drop that to 2,000 if you want, but, I mean, it's basically.
15, 16, we spent $916 this year so far. We have spent $640.
And I haven't gone to any real conferences.
So do we need a $2,500 budget for that line item?
That's what I was, you know, to intend to my city manager functions and stuff, that's why.
Do you guys want to bring it down? So we're on page 73.
Yeah, 73.
And we are looking at line item number 60710. Does that, do you see that?
Yeah, on the high end in 1415 was 1,600.
1415 was a really high year. All these things are high. I'm just trying to figure out, we are taking money out of our reserves for CIP, we're taking money out of general fund for water, wastewater. I'm trying to figure out where we can cut down. We've cut down on council where we could, we've cut down on our city clerk.
I do have another council suggestion, if you'd like.
Certainly.
You have $12,000 for your travel and training, and it's basically been.
And how much are we using?
6,000 and 4,000. So you've never gone fully to the 12 on that, so I suggest you can knock that down.
So maybe bring that down to eight.
Eight, and we'll drop the city manager to two.
What page is that?
Perfect. On page 70, under city council, item number 60710. Thank you, Mark, I didn't see that one. We have a $12,000 budget for travel and training, but we've never, I mean, we haven't gone past the, what, 6,400? So if we knock that down to eight, that should be more than enough, and we should have a surplus there, too. That's $4,000 we're cutting out.
And we can drop the city manager to two.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so then we're going to bring item number 60710 on page 73 from 2,500 to two.
Now, Madam Mayor, I just want to correct one thing. I thought I heard you say that the general fund is paying for water or wastewater. I just want to make sure. I don't know if that's what you meant, but no general fund.
Is that coming from reserves, then?
No general fund money is paid to water or wastewater.
So it is coming from reserves.
It's coming from their own reserves.
It's coming from their own reserves.
Correct. They have enough.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure enough's a fair statement, Carolyn, but sure.
They have enough in reserves for this fiscal year. That's right, I should say that.
We're just trying to cut where we can. The city clerk, miscellaneous, I think we could cut the 1,000 to 500 from item number 60900. Page 76. See, I should be adding all this up so I can see how much we're saving in the end, but I didn't do that.
We just started, so we have a, we're pretty close right now.
Thank you. Okay. Did anybody have anything for city council, city manager, or city clerk that they want to throw in?
No.
Madam Mayor, on the city manager mark, and this vehicle allowance, I mean, that's never been over 1,000, and that's proposed 3,600.
It's always, it's always been 3,600. My contract states I get 300 a month, so that is what I get every month. So that's contract negotiated.
That's in his salary.
Yeah, but why weren't those actually used? I mean, if it's in your contract, we should be giving it to you, right?
Which you are.
We are.
Well, why does it say 1516? Actual was 600, and 1415 was 1,000.
Because there was only two or three, two months' worth during that fiscal year. I got my car allowance in 1516, so only got two months' worth.
Well, I was going to say, if we're not giving it to you in your contract report, you should be getting it. So you are getting it now, correct?
Yes. And that's why it's 3,600 in the 1617 budget.
I just want to clarify that because it kind of didn't make sense. But, yeah, good.
I guess the office supplies, the non-departmental, are a little up, but not, they're estimating 13,156, and they're proposing 15,000. I don't know if that needs to be touched. So we.
What page do you want?
83.
Before we get all the way down, shall we tap, just keep a tally of what you've introduced?
Carolyn's doing that for me.
I didn't know she was going to.
Okay, so from, and city attorney, there's not, that's a contract, there's not much we can do to help cut that one down, so I think we need to leave city attorney alone. Go ahead.
Listening audience. On page 82, I had a question about non-departmental. I know the 6 million is what we paid out, but there was actual of 1415, 977, and then it's proposed of almost $800,000 increase in 1718 budget. Is there, is there something coming up?
Part of that would be the capital improvement projects. That's where we transfer from reserves in this fund, in this department.
So that's where that's coming out?
That's what that is. And right now, our capital improvement projects are, in this fund, are about a million.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so non-departmental, everybody's okay with that one? Then we move into finance, and I only had one item on page 88, line item 72200, office furniture. I think we just need to put that off, that 4,500. I think we can get rid of that. I know that they want to build partitions to give more privacy and quiet for the cubicles, but every time I go in there, it's pretty quiet. You moved your rambunctious public works people out, Rose, and it's gotten a lot quieter. So if that's okay, I'd like to delete that for now.
So as a guy who lives and works in a horrible office for 12 hours a day, I get the whole, in a cubicle hell. I mean, want to make sure I hear from y'all, you guys are okay with that, because I don't mind spending money to put up a cubicle wall. No offense, Madam Mayor.
And if you're there for other times of the day, it does get a little noisy with the counter and with our two counter staffs going up, so that's the reason we did it, and that's why we were proposing it. If the council wants to eliminate it, that's.
Is it four grand to put, just to put the partitions?
4,500.
No, I see. Just to put the partitions up? Really, it's five grand?
But if I could, just for a second, if I could just lobby for, rather than that, maybe we could wait for that for a couple of years and think about the desks for planning as a higher priority than the partitions in city hall. Just because planning, a lot of times, they don't have access to using their conference room because it's used by a lot of different agencies. So then they're down to their desks, and literally, Irma has about maybe two and a half foot on one side of her desk to open plans and show it to people that are coming in. So I just think we need to, we need the right tools to do the job correctly. And, you know, certainly, we can get, I think we can make do with certain things that we have at city hall, but if you could think about shifting things, planning is a priority over the partitions.
Yes, I would agree.
How much are the planning desks?
I think we allocated 9,000 for the two desks and.
Yes, 9,000 for the two desks.
That's already in the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll be visiting that department soon.
Yes.
4,500.
Is that the same setup you guys have?
Yes, same setup.
I don't know. I'm with you, Madam Mayor, but I don't know. I like my partition, so I, we'll see what the consensus is, but if they say they want a partition, I don't blame them, and I'm okay with providing a partition, so. I could be unloaded. I get it.
I've been in different times of the day.
I appreciate, I appreciate you combing this. I'm not trying to downplay your efforts here. I just, this one, I.
I support your effort to, we owe it to the citizens to look for savings. I know we, you know, we have a big walkability area. Maybe we could put a work table or something in planning. There is a big area. I thought the counters, where I've witnessed people coming in, kind of looking at both sides.
But the planner's need is in their office to be able to look at plans on their own without the public, so that would be a private area.
The offices are tight for that.
Yes.
I just, you know.
That was the purpose of the conference room, but the, I mean, maybe we should get back to not letting the conference room take priority over the planning department's needs, because that's a quiet room, that's a place that.
I just, we purchased three desks this year that were not in the budget, and they were able to move funds around in order to do that.
Well, actually, one of the desks was budgeted, and money was moved around for the other two.
One of them was, yeah. And I just, I honestly don't want to have that much leeway in our budget. If something comes up that is, needs to be done, and it's not in the budget, I would like it to come to council. The desks are beautiful, but that was an expense that was not in the budget. So that's why I am trying to streamline. I don't think our residents really care whether our departments have nice desks. Unfortunately, city manager Birdzinski's desk that was bought by our previous city manager for $5,000 was sold for $30 online, and I just have a really big problem with that.
All right. Madam Mayor, if I can ask, Mark, what was it just for the partitions? It's not this $4,000.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it is. That's what I was asking.
$4,000.
45.
Those partitions are expected. Did we go out to different bidders, or where did that number come from?
That was from the furniture company that we've used.
Yeah, it's the same company that we used to build them, I'd say about in 2002, and they have the same materials, so we wanted to go with the company that could match those materials.
How much were they then? Same price?
I want to say they were pricey. I want to say for that whole setup, they paid about 25,000, I think, for everything you see out there, and then the city clerk's office that was over beyond. Yeah, and frankly, it should have been done to a higher height back then, but prior city manager wanted to be able to see all of his employees, so he did it lower.
Can we find some middle ground? Can we partition some of it? Took the words right out of my mouth. I don't know. I don't know.
And that might be a great compromise, because, you know, once Carolyn retires, then we just have Ben sitting up front and nobody behind him. Carolyn will be in periodically, but sometimes working from home as well, as needed. But the other side, where Karen does payroll and accounts payable, she's really the one that needs a little bit of privacy and a little bit of, you know, soundproofing. So it was really more to help her than really anyone else.
Okay. Does that affect anybody else? Is it just her?
You know, sight-wise, it's not going to be the most visual aesthetic, the best thing, but we can, you know what? We'll get used to it. Let's put it that way.
So maybe approve $1,000 for that?
Karen, where Karen is, where the desk in front, right, where I'm sitting now to Karen, where Karen is, where the desk in front, right, where, where I'm sitting now is off to the side behind Ben.
As you enter, it's to the right, right?
Yeah, as you enter, it's to the right.
As you enter, it's to the right. It's the cubicle air, it's the cubicle line on the right as you enter.
Right in front of the conference room. So that cube, right in front of the conference room.
So, do you wanna put a thousand into that item, then?
I think we just leave it up to them, I think it'll be, it may cut it in half, I don't think it's- So the forty-five's for two partitions, so it would be more like twenty-two, fifty, or-
Okay, shall we put that there, then?
Sure.
How about if we put twenty-five hundred, because it, just in case one was a little bit more higher than the other?
Sure.
Okay. That's page eighty-eight.
That was page eighty-eight, we're in finance.
Madam Mayor, can I get one more question in here? And the, the desk that you need in planning, where's that line item?
It's coming up in planning.
Oh, it's coming up in planning.
I just jumped ahead a little bit to try to-
Okay.
I know, to try to lobby.
I was being the rabbit there.
Okay, so we've gotten, nobody has anything else in finance they're looking at? We move on to police, public safety, police and fire, and there's really not much we can do to touch that one. That one's just a given. Leisure services, library, that one we are putting in the budget. The higher price, we're going with what they could do to us, and we're hoping to get that knocked down.
So there'll be more money freed up if it is?
And there will be more money that can go back into the general funds, that's, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for money to be put back in the general funds and these two other accounts that I, I think are important. Then we move on to recreation, and again, I have, there's two items I think we should bring way down. Item under operating and maintenance, on page ninety-eight, we have item number six-zero-two-five-zero, maintenance slash repair of the rec department. They did use ten thousand, four seventy-four, and fifteen, sixteen. They used three thousand, six fifty this year supposedly, and they've got twelve thousand in the budget. I think if we knock that down to seventy-five hundred?
Can we ask?
Ninety-eight.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Public Works Director Hess if she was aware of anything that was needed, that, why that number was at that level.
I'm not sure, that's really specific to Kyle's and probably their facilities, so I don't know.
So, but you, you don't have any budgetary plans for improvements that-
No.
Okay.
And this is a living, breathing, as I'm told, living, breathing budget, and it can be adjusted at any time.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanted to make sure the twelve wasn't there for some reason that we had it in, in place, and we don't.
Then right underneath that, we have item number six-zero-two-five-two, maintenance slash repair joint use. It's at four thousand, we use nine hundred and forty-three in fifteen, sixteen, and two seventy-six this year. I think that should be a thousand dollars.
Maybe fifteen, Mayor?
Fifteen, okay. Is that okay with you guys? I don't know of any-
Fifteen hundred, is that?
Yeah.
In case something comes up. I mean, I liked it, I, I'm okay with it, I would like to hear what they had to say, though, I mean, I don't, they may have a plan, I don't, I hate to cut their budget without asking, have you, have you, did you ask them?
No, I've, I've sat with Carolyn, I did not ask Kyle.
But I think it would be more from Public Works Director, since it's maintenance of the buildings.
Maintenance repair.
I don't, unfortunately, I don't go in the, in this particular fund, so if there's other things that the city's required to repair.
Then they either move things around or they come back to council.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I, I just think that that's a little high, that we don't need to do. Anything, anybody have anything in recreation? Then we move on to streetlights, and I, we can't really do anything with streetlights. Then we get into, on page one oh four, our public works, engineering.
Madam Mayor, I just wanna ask questions about lights. Didn't, didn't this used to be a lot higher before they put the LED lights in? Wasn't that a higher amount? I just wanted to know if that, that-
That was supposed to-
The cost came down substantially, didn't that used to be a lot higher, Rose?
In prior fiscal years?
Yes.
I, I don't remember, I wanna say it was in, in the ninety-nine thousand dollar range, but now we've added more lights, et cetera, but I just don't remember.
I'll research it later.
We were gonna have a savings, and what we estimated about a three thousand dollar savings, and we were gonna put that into a special account, remember, for lights on industrial and-
Right.
And to replace these with what WeWatch wanted in their, in their streetlights, so, yeah.
We do have that information, though, we can get that for you, council member. We have it in our finance department.
Okay, I just wanted to take a look at that. See, we saved some money on that.
Okay, so we're moving past streetlights into public works. Did anybody have anything in public works, engineering?
We, we mentioned that in the beginning, and so that's the extra hundred thousand, so that'll be wiped out on that one, going into gas tax.
Okay, now, I have, I have quite a few on page one oh eight. I know, I, I'm sorry, I, I just, you know, give me a, give me a highlighter.
Yeah.
Gosh.
Oh, you already did.
Okay, under operating and maintenance, we have item number six-zero-two-one-zero, computer maintenance and software. We- Do we wanna leave that at the two thousand? We've used ten sixty-eight, we've used fourteen twenty-five, they keep putting two thousand in it, but we're not hitting two thousand. Do we wanna go to fifteen hundred, or do we wanna leave it at two thousand?
What is this for?
Rose.
Why, you have a computer?
No, that, let me just double check.
Was it telemetry stuff, when the, was that updates to the telemetry?
Automated work order. Now, part of this has to do with our work order program, we have various licensing and supporting. It's part of, part of our SCADA goes through this information, and we have specific computer training and a support for the staff when they're doing, trying to do their reports and other work, that comes out of this particular budget as well.
And I would respectfully request it to stay at two thousand.
Okay, even though we've never even hit fifteen hundred?
Well, again, we have a couple of months coming up, so-
For license and stuff, that stuff-
You have to put new software and stuff, that's really expensive.
Okay, alrighty. I, I told Chanel and Carolyn, I'm gonna bring it up, and it's consensus here. On item number six-zero-two-seven-zero, maintenance vehicles, we've spent forty-nine fifty-eight. Last year, we're estimating, right now, we're at fifty-six fifty-six for this year, and we have a, a proposed budget of fifteen thousand.
We can reduce that to ten.
Thank you. Okay, then we have item number six-zero-seven-one-zero, travel and training.
What about the signs one? While you're on a tear here.
I, that's a, I'm, I think, the reason I didn't go there was, I think that's going to include our directional signage, which is gonna be replaced, is that correct, or not?
No, that signage is for when we go through town, and we're trying to replace any faded signs, replacement sign.
Seesmo ones?
No, the street, these are the regulatory warning signs, stop signs, street name signs, various items like that.
So do we wanna leave that at ten thousand, or can we bring it down a little bit?
We could, we could probably, well, see, it's, one year we went up to about eighty-five hundred when we were starting to be a little bit more proactive with the sign replacement.
Do we need ten thousand?
We could probably drop that to eight at this point, and just, and then come back if, if we needed to.
How does council feel about that?
I just wanted to ask, Rose, because there's a sign, there's a sign that continues to get bumped and propped up at the, the new pass-through from Alvinson to Patty Bay.
That's the one.
And the sign has been, is upright, less than it's tilted, but about three days ago, it's gotten, like it got run over. It's at ninety degrees to the ground. You know, is that, do we build the property owner for that, or is that a dedicated driveway there?
That's not, that is a private driveway that we city built on grant to that property, so we do not maintain.
It is their responsibility.
But I don't know where that sign, who, who takes care of that sign?
They do, it's private.
Okay, so it's-
So we can drop that to eight?
That'd be-
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I think we should leave it at ten. Anyone else on that? Because, you know, if you get signs run over, whatever, they have to be replaced.
Well, again, if we move it to eight, which is still under what we've done, and it becomes higher, then we readjust the budget.
I'd, I'd like to stay with the eight.
Stay with eight?
Well, I meant to go to eight, go to eight from ten, right?
Right. Okay, on travel and training, item number six-zero-seven-one-zero, last year, they spent eleven seventy-three, this year, seven hundred and eleven, can we knock the twenty-five hundred either to fifteen hundred, or two?
We can do fifteen hundred.
Thank you.
For sure.
Okay, line item six-zero-eight-zero-zero, contract services, we spent six, sixty-seven thousand, fifteen, sixteen. We're looking at fifty thousand this year, and the budget is seventy-five. Can we bring that down at all, to say seventy? I'm on page one oh eight.
Yeah.
Line item six-zero-eight-zero-zero, contract services. Is that seventy-five pock-marketed for something?
No, that, that money's, it's for, as needed, in other miscellaneous services that we need, assisting me in various duties, so that could be work on Avenue of Flags.
It's a janitorial for city hall.
Yeah, and that, and those various services.
And it's also the answering service for city hall, so those are consistent amounts in pest control.
Okay, 'cause you've got sixty-seven thousand that we spent last year, and so far, only fifty thousand this year. So I was just wondering if we really needed that seventy-five. If you say we do, I, I, I mean, this is just a conversation, I'm not, I'm just seeing where I can, where we can budget things, so I can-
Post office, pest control, library issue. Oh, yes, yeah.
So we have other buildings, outline buildings, the sheriff, and the library, and the post office, that in case we need pest control, there are-
We have continuous contracts, and so that kind of work might need to-
You think it needs to stay at seventy-five, then?
I would, because the janitorial services, that's another part of things, we, we would like to go out to RFP four, and so I don't know that we're, all the costs, estimates that we've been receiving have been higher. So that's what's been kind of keeping us at bay.
And the telephone, six-seven-seven-zero-five, you've got a five thousand dollar budget, we've never, we've, at our highest year, we did forty-three, thirty-eight, we did two thousand last year, and sixteen hundred this year. You've got a five thousand dollar budget for it? Line item six-seven-seven-zero-five, at the end of operating and maintenance.
Right, we can reduce that, I think there was a year, and I don't recall why, it was higher in the past, that, over four thousand. We could probably try reducing that to four, just to-
Thank you, that would be great. Utilities, water? I, you know, I hate to get into water and electric, because those are utilities.
Right.
So I hate to, to try to slice down something that, you know, but-
Madam Mayor?
Certainly.
I just, I just have a question about that, Rose. Under sixty-one-two-eleven, you're budgeting fifteen thousand, but it's never gone over ten. I mean, I don't wanna penny pinch on that, but is there something coming up that you guys increase that by that percentage?
Yeah, we, we still have to pay water rates that have been increased also. So we are estimating a little bit of an increase on there. We don't want to be low and not be able to pay our own bills for that.
Pay the water fund.
But that one's certainly something we can control, you know, we conserve as well, and we don't expend those monies.
About twenty-seven percent, I think it's less than thirty, less than thirty, but more than twenty-five percent is what has been coming in for the water revenue stuff. Maybe that's what the bill was.
So, nobody has anything left on public works general? We can move on to, we've got stormwater, and again, I don't think there's a thing we can do about stormwater, that's, moving on to parks. I had, and I wish I'd had an opportunity to talk to Kyle, I'm just looking at past history here. On page one hundred sixteen, I'm trying to go fast, I know I've got a lot of marks, but-
Madam Mayor, can I back up a second?
Certainly.
I just have a question about our rotation on our vehicles, I know in law enforcement, we ran them to a certain mileage. Or is that what we're doing with our vehicles, or just at a certain age, or?
Typically, yeah.
Say we got a patrol car that went to a hundred and ten thousand, that's typically when it would be replaced. Whether it's still running good or not, I mean, that was just your benchmark.
Right.
Is that what we're doing with these vehicles?
Similar, typical city fleet vehicles for public works, turnaround's usually five years. So we've been extending them to at least ten, or until it breaks down.
How many miles? I mean, Bilton's not a very big town, what kind of mileage are on these vehicles?
They range from, one vehicle of the three that we're replacing is about thirty-seven thousand, the other is sixty-one, and the other one's seventy-five, so they kind of, it's kind of vary.
'Cause I know we had some really old patrol cars, and they, just because, based on the mileage alone.
Right.
So I mean, is there some kind of procedure that we can do for the future, that we say we go to X miles, and then we decide to replace that vehicle, or rather than just being-
Instead of years?
Arbitrary, you know, yeah, oh, we've had this five years, let's sell it, well, it's got seventeen thousand miles on it.
Well, right, as I'm saying, typically, it's that we have in ten years has been what I've been using as, as a turnaround timeframe. Some vehicles that we've had longer, and also just on the general condition, for example, the, the vehicle that we just surplus and replaced this past year, I mean, half the seat was gone, and there's just continuous other problems with it. So, I mean, we just had to, to replace that. These, I mean, there's not-
I'd almost rather see some kind of a policy where we take it to a certain mileage.
Okay.
Because, you know, but they're still driving Crown Victorias, and I don't, are you guys got any Crown Vics left?
Uh, yes, we do.
So, you know, and that is a policy, so it can set, maybe in my mind, you know, being from law enforcement, that if you set up, at this mileage, you know, even if it's in good shape, say we go to fifty thousand or whatever, then we replace that vehicle. I mean, just come up maybe with an average number of miles on the vehicle, and I would almost rather say, hey, the seats are all crap in it, put new seats in it. You know what I mean?
And we, and we used to set money aside, remember, every year, we would set so much money aside to purchase new vehicles, and now all of a sudden, we're looking at a, a major expense in the next two years to replace, three vehicles, four vehicles?
Three vehicles.
Three vehicles, and honestly, I, yeah, if one of them's got thirty-seven thousand miles on it, and the highest one has, what, seven?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, I'd, yeah, I'd, I'd fix up what we've got.
We can look at that as far as a policy, as far as mileage, or things like that.
Policy on that, and I'd rather honestly say, put money into fixing them, rather than just going down and buying a new one. You know, 'cause obviously, they're getting in and out of them a lot.
Right.
Throw new seats in.
Right.
It'd be a lot cheaper to mine a new car, trust me.
And we do, we, we spend a lot of money on maintenance to make sure that what we have is running really well, so to, to just go out and buy new ones, I'm, I'm with you on that one.
You know, to kind of go along with this conversation, is it possible to get a report of what we did raise, what kind of capital we received for item for item? I don't, I don't think we had that many items that we had the auction, in the auction, just to see, for example, the vehicle, what did the vehicle?
It went for twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred.
And that was beat up and old, and still got twenty-six out of it.
How many miles were on that, do we know?
I don't know readily.
We can get that information, though, we have that.
But I, I would appreciate just seeing item, line item of everything, what we, what we put up for sale and what we got for it, because-
Yeah, Vice Mayor Andrasik brought up a good point the other day with the sale of the five thousand dollar office furniture for thirty dollars. We could've given it to the senior center, and had, had the thrift store, and had them sell it, and make some money for themselves.
Which we did for one of the other desks.
I saw, I saw it out there, yeah. Okay, anything else in public works? I'm trying to get through this.
We'll get to the vehicles in a little while, when we get to the capital improvements.
Yeah.
They're not in this area.
Thank you, no, they're not. So, we move on to parks, on page one hundred and sixteen, I have a few items. The first one is item six-zero-two-five-five, the golf course renovation park. We've spent eight hundred and forty-three dollars, we've spent eighty-nine seventy-four estimated this year, and our budget for next year is proposed at twenty thousand.
What are we renovating?
What is that?
Uh, the second one down on operating maintenance, on page one hundred sixteen.
And I believe that's the slope renovation.
So that includes slope renovation and more substantial-
So that includes slope renovation and more substantial roof repairs for the golf course building.
So we do need the twenty thousand for that?
No, we do need twenty.
Well, and that, you know, that's a, I think it's a good neighbor thing. No one ever took care of it until the city.
Oh, it's beautiful, yeah.
But I'm talking about the slope. The slope should have been addressed. That's an expense for erosion and those sort of things. We've, I've, you know, talked to Mike about it and, you know, and he feels like that's like an albatross for him, but it's going to improve the aesthetics of the area, but it's, it's a, it's something that probably.
Well, he was going to plant beer hops up there for a while.
I think they changed it.
Okay, not doing that?
Yeah, thank you.
Certainly, yes.
If I may. On River View, is there something coming up for that as well?
Yes, let me get back to there.
Because we haven't spent more than twenty-two, two seventy-eight in the last two years and you've got forty thousand proposed.
Right, there, we have to do some grading activities on both drainage swales to remove all the silt and that has accumulated and reestablish those channels to get back out into the creek. Right, and it's going to, we tried doing a small vacuum, thinking that might work with just at the main outlet, storm drain outlets. And they couldn't vacuum out all the silt that's accumulated in there.
Okay. Alrighty, going down to equipment rental, six oh three one hundred.
Madam Mayor, if I can ask one more question.
Certainly.
Well, I'm just a springer today. On electric, is there something going up substantially with that as well on two forty-one, sixty-one two forty-one?
There is a new way that PG&E is billing, that they bill peak hours now that has caused some of our utilities to go up. But.
Exactly, Rose would have to get in on that conversation as far as why it's budgeted at nine.
Well, because we're already at eighty-five hundred this fiscal year, so that's why we did nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I took my smart meter off.
Right, and we can't.
Sorry, you don't need a smart meter. Equipment rental, we've spent in the last three years forty-eight dollars and we still have a thousand dollar proposed line item. Couldn't we knock that to five hundred?
Which line are you looking at?
Six zero three one zero.
Six zero, yes.
Thank you.
Down to what, I'm sorry?
Five hundred. I mean, it's only five hundred dollars savings, but if we can.
No, that's fine, I just didn't hear the number.
I'm still on one sixteen. Contract services for the park. Is that one fifty-nine is a good number. We've spent one forty, say one forty-eight and one forty-two. Couldn't we put that at one fifty and save nine thousand in that line item? Or is something else coming up with contract services?
No, it's, it's the same amount we have there. We just are doing a lot of our other repairs with additional irrigation breaks, valve breaks and things like that that have been constant at the parks. So we're not quite through with the fiscal year yet.
So you are anticipating that we're going to need that money?
Yes.
Okay.
When those, you know, we've been walking there, we, maybe we want to go away from the solid brass handles because it seems like it's a collector's item. They've taken them.
They disappear?
They disappear. And then we've several spigots that used to be water drawing points and they're capped. So they're not helping anybody. I don't know.
Yeah, never mind.
A plastic.
You're welcome to bring it up.
About for the people to have, you know, on the perimeter down by the near the walkway. I think there's some tables there and there was a lot of infrastructure put in, but over half of them, I believe, are capped. They're just, because people keep, I don't know, maybe we replaced them and then they.
No, we've capped some of the water spigots and things like that because people are playing with them and then they get stuck on and then we're, we've got water leak. So we've capped them all, so if they needed to be used, we uncap them, et cetera.
Okay.
But that's the reason why they're capped.
So they're, it's not creating friction?
No.
Okay, I thought they were there for the residents to wash.
Okay, moving on, item number six, one 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 zero, chemicals. We've used eighty-four dollars, a hundred and twenty-two dollars. We're estimating one oh two this year and we keep a line item of a thousand. Couldn't we bring that one down too?
Oh, yes, we can bring that down to even two fifty at that point. Valley Gardner's been picking up a lot of items for us.
Thank you very much. And the one right under it, six one one two five, small equipment. In the last two years, we've done four forty-seven and two eighty-five and it's, that one's still a thousand? Is there any way we could bring that to five hundred?
We could bring it to five, that's fine.
Thank you. Then we have under that one, six one one four zero, operational supplies. In the last two years, we've used ten, a thousand fifty-three and seven hundred and we still have a four thousand dollar proposed budget. Is, are we expecting something or can we bring that one down even to two?
I'm not sure why that one seems so low as far as what we're expecting. I was expecting to be actually around thirty-five hundred because we're replacing a lot of trash bags at the parks. I think that's also where we put all the doggy pot bags and those have been usually almost a thousand dollars when we purchase it. So I'd like to leave it at four because I think we might have moved some accounts around.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything under the park budget? Then we go into Public Works, landscape maintenance. And I don't have anything there.
You know, we didn't, the park, talking about the parks, Bobby did order new mirrors. They've just, it was a design issue with the mirrors and I'm glad he did it. He said he thought about just painting a black line where the crud was creeping up from the mirror, but I think we needed new mirrors. So this is probably going to be a couple of thousand dollars because I think there were twelve mirrors that need to be replaced and they're stainless and good size. And I think if you keep the place clean, keep it up, you don't have nearly the vandalism. I go in as often as I can just to see. We don't have a graffiti issue, I don't believe, if I may have missed that, but I think people are respecting us and that's the only way to do is keep it up. The, I think we're going to probably see a big, a replacement for material, whatever that, wherever he would have mirrors.
That would be River View Park?
River View Park, nice.
And we're leaving that one at the higher number.
Okay.
And Councilmember King had a question on page one eighteen.
Okay.
Just informational, I think?
Yeah, I just wondered if there was something coming up there as well because the actual was, you know, roughly eighty-five and fifteen, sixteen. And then the estimate is seventy-seven, but the budget is one eleven. Is there something coming up that we did?
You know what I think that is? The estimate I think is a little low in, because in our utility for water, in the landscape maintenance, the meters are read biannually. So we're, we know that that's going to be probably another forty, I think.
Because of our own water.
We estimate it low because we just weren't sure when we estimate it. Sometimes our estimates are on the low side. And that one, I was looking at that one, did it look like it was too low? Yeah, so.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's what that is.
Actually, I do have a question on this one.
Certainly.
The ten thousand dollars, what is that for, maintenance slash repair?
And what page are you on?
One eighteen.
One nineteen. Maintenance slash repair, so that would be, I'll tell you what that is, one moment.
S was eight and ten thousand, right.
I'm going to let Rose.
So those are going to be all the irrigation systems in our landscape maintenance. We've been fixing sprinklers, we've been fixing a few valves here or there, but we've got the same irrigation lines that we're finding a lot of more problems in, that we're having to do a lot more substantial repairs. We.
But not in the parks, right?
No, this is in general, so it's like the landscape on Highway two forty-six areas. Landscape on Avenue of Flags, landscaping at the different facilities. Here at the post office, City Hall and the park and ride. So we could, we could reduce that and just come back mid-year if we need to. It all depends on how much work we can get moving forward with Valley Gardner.
Put it down to five?
We could put it back down to five, yeah.
So you're looking at six oh two five zero?
Thank you, Foster.
Yes.
Six oh two five zero.
Okay, so we're moving on to community development planning and I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I miss one?
No, no, I was going to make some suggestions for you ahead to make a case and then you can.
I'm so glad, I feel like I'm.
Let me make some suggestions.
Please.
What page are you on, Mark?
Uh, one twenty-two.
One twenty-two.
I'm still going to make the pitch for functional workspaces for the equipment. However, under item advertising legal, six oh five two zero, I think we could drop that to two hundred. Membership and publication, six oh six five zero, we could drop that to eight hundred. And contract services with just six oh eight zero zero, which is primarily Irma and Cosmont, I could drop that to one thirty. And that would save ten thousand dollars to offset the furniture systems. And I think that would be a functional for the department. We can, you know, we've done ninety-nine, we've done one sixty-five this year. We're not even, we're going to not get to the one forty. We'll get a little closer, but I think we can live with the one thirty under the contract services. So that would be my request for the council.
Thank you. The only other item I would like to change is every year since Mr. Beardzinski took over city manager, we've been leaving that planning director salary in budget. And as we are not anticipating any changes right now, I would like to take that out and put it back in the general funds. And should we need it, it's there to put back in the budget. But we're not, we're not planning on budgeting a planning director. And that's a big ticket item. And every year, we put it in there and nothing is being done. And I just hate to see it sitting in this budget when we're really not budgeting for a planning director at this point.
What happens if he leaves mid-year?
Well, then we take it out of general funds and we put it in our fee.
You do, you do that, so.
I just, it's sitting there and we're really not planning on using it.
I'm okay with that. What's the advice of the experts on the topic?
Our financial directors?
Yeah, I mean, the woman that's been budgeting for twenty years, what's your opinion?
Yeah, well, it's true. We come back at mid-year, we'll be coming back at mid-year every, for two years because we have the two-year budget now. When we, if something were to come up and we needed to make a budget adjustment, we let you know then. If it were to come up sooner than that, we can always come in for a budget adjustment at any time, really.
Mark, you got an opinion?
I, that's, that's fine with me, I mean.
You'll just give us a heads up right before we drive you away?
That's right.
Got it?
I'll give you a couple of weeks.
I'm trying to be, I, you know, I'm.
No, I like it.
I'm not as mean as they say. I just, I'm trying to fine line this because we are, you know, I just want it fine lined. I don't want a lot of wiggle room.
I had a comment and I'm not sure quite where it is, but we, I kind of discussed it with you a little bit. The post office is a piece of property we have. And I think we need to get our legal team designed because I'm told that the post office, what's taking so long? Well, the post office says it's the city's responsibility and the city says it's the post office and I'd like us to, it's been a couple of months now. If we could have Steve weigh in and, I mean, this would be something, I don't know what we're talking about, but it's, it seems pretty.
We looked, we looked at the contract and the contract specifically says interior tenant improvements are their responsibility.
That's the way I remember it.
And we gave them, the firms that do that work for us that will come out in a day to fix it.
And there's, and I talked to a carrier today, excuse me, and she said that they were called and they don't, there's a piece that broke in the top and that they don't fix it. So it's not so much, I mean, right now they have no idea how to fix it.
And that means I didn't want us to go another month and find out.
It's kind of ridiculous that for a month and a half, our residents have had to mail packages out of a double dutch door. That's.
But I would like to ask if that's possible to, it's a budget item. I mean, we either, if we don't have to pay it, we need to get that decided so we can.
We've made the decision that it's not our budgetary.
I'm happy with that decision, but I mean, I think we need to strengthen it or put some, there must be some performance clause in the, for the tenant in, because it's a public facility.
Also, in the clause, it says if the city doesn't do the repair, if they continue to feel that it's our responsibility and we don't do it in a timely fashion, they will do the work and they will invoice us. So they still have that option to do that. And we've given them the company that we would have called to do it and if they can't do it, we're, we're looking at what, maybe a general contractor, so I don't know what that would entail.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and have Steve take a look at the contract and work with us and we'll get back to you.
Speed it up rather than having contractors come out and say they can and they can, do they order and they can't order. I think you could take that thing out and put another apparatus in there in five days if you had to.
Garage door opener.
Yeah.
Isn't this ridiculous?
Yeah, it's really.
I'm so glad I don't work there anymore. This is just embarrassing.
So I hope that changes I propose along with that would be acceptable to the council.
Thank you, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Because I was looking at that furniture.
I know, and, but I found ways to adjust it plus the salaries, so I think.
You did. Does, does council have any other comments with planning?
Madam Mayor, on seventy-two three hundred, are you upgrading the computers?
Yeah, we have one computer that needs to, to be fixed. It's really old at this point, so that's.
You're just going to replace it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Moving on into enterprise funds, which again, I don't think there's much to do. Under wastewater, I just had a question regarding item number, under operating maintenance, six oh two one one, data processing, contract maintenance. We spent zero two years ago, estimate is zero, and we still have a thirteen hundred dollar budget line item. So do we need that thirteen hundred? Could we put it at five hundred or seven fifty? Or is there a reason why we need it at thirteen hundred? I know these are small numbers, but.
Yeah, that's part of the utility billing software, that our new software maintenance that we have to pay. Pay, we still have an ongoing maintenance payment.
Okay, so, but wastewater paid nothing last year and it doesn't look like they're paying anything this year.
Well, they, the utilities are split between the general fund and the, so we'll have to look, it should have been charged. So there may have been some reason it wasn't charged, so I'll check, I'll double check that. But I think for now, we probably should leave it in there.
And maybe it's not charged towards the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, because that sometimes happens.
Uh, bill.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
So I hate to say it, but we've been cutting travel and training everywhere. I think we should be consistent here too.
And wastewater?
This is, I hate to say it, but wastewater and water, where we need to save by far, bar none, the most amount of money.
Because that's, the rest is fifty-seven bucks.
Travel, training and wastewater is four thousand. We've spent about fifty-seven dollars this year and a little over three thousand last year.
Yeah, is this for, I mean, is this for recurring certifications?
This is recurring certifications for all of my staff and myself. That's eight people, the travel and training is for.
Okay.
Okay.
This is until I attend like a meeting?
No, I appreciate you pulling, you know, discussions are good. Okay.
You left it at four. So we're just banking on the, we're banking on the water increase this year.
Yeah, we're going to have to. Okay, so from wastewater, we get into water. And again, I saw your travel and training there where we've spent fifteen fifty-six last year and eighteen thirty this year and you've got three thousand in the budget? You're going to need that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm on page one thirty-four. So then we get into, well, that was, and membership, I'm sorry, I was reading the membership publication line where you've done fifteen fifty-six and eighteen thirty and you want three thousand. And you need, you need the three thousand for membership publications or would two thousand work?
What is that for?
So we, we're part of different organizations from SEWE, WEF, water reuse and different, different memberships for the agency.
We haven't used the three thousand in the last two years. Do we, do we still need that money there or would two thousand suffice? It is line item six zero six five zero on page one thirty-four.
I think I've already reduced. I think I've already reduced that.
Okay.
Because we had seven before and I had reduced it to three.
Okay, okay. I appreciate you, you going through and cutting where you can, too. Going down to tools, six one one two seven. We've spent four hundred and fifty dollars last year. We're looking at one fifty-one this year and you've got fifteen thousand in the budget? Can we cut that to ten or do you...
Yes, actually, that could be fifteen hundred. I think we might have just added a zero behind there.
Thank you. Okay, operational supplies, six one one four zero. We did eight oh two last year. We're looking at five oh five this year and you've got three thousand as a budget item. Can we knock that in half?
Six one one three zero, is that the office supplies?
Office supplies.
Operational supplies, six one one four zero on page one thirty-four.
If we can put fifteen hundred on that.
Thank you, from three thousand to fifteen hundred. And then the one right underneath meter expense, I take it that's because of the new meters? That it's, it's gonna go up from nineteen eight sixty-one this year to forty thousand?
Yes, so, so we've been replacing meters and then the meters that we put on the new developments, we charge against that, so, yes.
Okay, then six seven six zero zero, safety equipment. We've done eight forty-three, nine thirty-eight and four seventy-two and we've got three thousand there. Can we cut that down to fifteen hundred?
Just one moment, Holly, I'm trying to catch up here. Okay, six...
Is that because of the new...
Six zero zero.
Safety equipment.
This is safety equipment for water department.
Yes, let's, we could put that to fifteen hundred right now.
Eight hundred?
If we can do fifteen hundred and put it to half. And then we're gonna wait, because we've got some other work with JPIA. So if we needed to do some others additional...
I don't, I don't want any of the guys working without the right safety equipment. I'm just wondering, yeah, three thousand was just more than...
Hey, can we go back up one, Madam Mayor?
Certainly.
To that regulatory compliance while we're combing here?
Yeah, we spent ten thousand two ninety-two last year. We're looking at ten thousand one sixty-one this year and you've got a budget of twenty-two thousand.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Six seven five seven five regulatory compliance.
Regulatory compliance?
Five seven five, right.
It sounds daunting, I was wondering, you know, like Nessie went towards regulatory compliance, but...
But we've only spent about half of it.
We've just been...
We've spent less than half of it.
Keep hearing that the fees that they charge us are gonna be going up. This is from the state water agency, DWR, state health department. So they charge us, every time we ask for help, you know, or when they review our items, they give us a charge for, so we've just heard that those costs are going up. We just don't know the exact amount, so...
How about we put eighteen down or so whatever we can, we're gonna go back...
Take it down by four.
Eighteen, thank you.
With the backflow preventers, isn't that something, do we pay, when those get inspected to the state?
No, we monitor it ourselves.
Good catch, good catch, Foster.
I mean, I hate to say it, but like the state water price is another one.
We can't do any...
There's a four hundred thousand dollar difference between, I mean, I, I get it. I, I get the gravity of it, I'm just trying to understand.
That's the estimate I believe I received from CCWA, so that's the number I can...
Got it.
That we estimated, yeah.
Peace, peace, peace.
But you're right, that is, that's a big jump.
That's news to me, alright.
That is a big jump. And that's why our water bills are going up, because we're also being charged a lot more.
There was a savings last year that they applied, so that was why it was less.
Oh.
It's normally so. But we, we'll look at that real careful and if it goes down, we'll, we'll come back and let you know at mid-year.
No, no, I, I don't, no labor, I did know that that was a...
I mean, they are spending about a thousand.
Offset charge, yeah.
But it is a little high.
Kind of flowing from above.
Yeah. Okay, does anybody have anything else in water? Okay. One thirty-nine, I've somehow I've...
Madam Mayor, if I...
Certainly.
On, um, seventy-three five hundred on page one thirty-five.
One thirty-five.
Is there something coming up?
That's a bi, that's a biannual, that's next year's budget.
Right, but there's something coming up that it went from seventeen hundred dollars to two twenty thousand.
Do you have some equipment planned for our eighteen nineteen?
Right, so we, instead of trying to plan, budgeting this year for any equipment that we need to replace, meters, not, you know, not water meters, but...
Sampling equipment, sounding equipment and generators.
So that's what we've got budgeted out there.
I go from one thirty-nine to one forty-nine.
What are you on?
Well, I was on one thirty-nine, leaving our water capital, but then I jumped...
The pages came up on this.
Okay, so I'm missing, I jumped from one thirty-nine to one forty-three. Oh, here's, oh, here's one forty-one, I'm sorry, other funds, my members...
Madam Mayor, I'm, I think we're back on the right page, but if we can move into the capital improvement projects from here, because most of these are, these relate to all capital improvements, with the exception of the LTF, which we can't change, like the breeze and we can't make any changes.
Right, right, no, 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 and I totally get that.
So we should just jump to capital improvements.
What page?
And we will give you that page?
Yeah.
One fifty-eight?
One fifty-eight. Okay.
The numbers didn't print, so...
So do we have any idea where we are with our, our cuts so far?
Uh, yes, okay, so the general fund, we've cut approximately forty-five thousand four hundred and fifty.
Good work, Madam Mayor, good work.
Thank you.
So adding that to the two hundred and twenty-two thousand, we're at two hundred, almost two hundred and seventy thousand.
Now, that does not include the planning directors?
I was gonna say...
I was just gonna get to that, but the planning director, I don't have the exact number on that, so I'm, I'm going to estimate that at, with benefits, I'm gonna say eighty thousand and that's probably a low number, but we'll say eighty added to that. So we're, we're well above three hundred thousand.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, guys, and thank everybody for their patience. Now we're getting into the CIP, which is kind of fun and these are bigger numbers. Going down...
May I ask a question real quick?
Uh-huh.
Just as a, as a topic, so I emailed Rose, this is like a million, this is, white years better than where we were last week, so I want, I wanted to vocally applaud the team here. But I did have one request that I didn't see it manifest itself from the last meeting to this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And that was documenting which of the projects are council-approved and which ones are, I think, are you thinking, is that kind of your attempt to do it in this? Page one sixty-two summary, like the summary thing or, you know what I'm talking about, Rose? You were gonna line item mark which items were council items? So I don't mind attempting to hold us more accountable on items that were expending significant...
Origination, there's a line there that says origination at the top of each project.
Hold on.
So if you look at page...
You'd like page one six, one sixty-two.
Okay, cool. So what is, what is, oh, okay, okay, I got it. But I like that, so then you put a, even better.
They did, they did a really good job.
Oh, yeah, I, I like this, I didn't, I didn't see that there.
They really did a good job.
Okay. Okay, so I'll, go ahead, sorry, I have somebody I want to talk about, but you seem like you're on, you're on a roll, so just press please, ma'am.
I've, I've got, I just have a couple. First of all, our Saninaz River Trail construction, we have no funds allocated and out of the savings, I'd like to put fifty thousand dollars.
On which one is this?
For our trails.
Oh, the trails?
I'd like to put fifty thousand into trails. I'd like to put twenty-five thousand. I don't think it's, it's actually a CIP, but the cash for grass.
Yeah, that was up earlier, but we know where that, that is.
I mean, that's what, where I would like to see some money go. I, I had a question regarding the post office fire alarm system only because I'm, I'm really aware of it. It was broken when I got there fourteen years ago.
Holly, I'm sorry, can we start over?
Sure.
So that we can document and put them in the right spot?
Okay, well, we are on page one, we're starting into the CIPs. Uh, one fifty-eight, but, and the River Trail construction, we have, we had twenty thousand put into the conceptual plan feasibility study, that's twenty thousand dollars. I'd like to put another fifty thousand into, into the construction fund.
And that's fine, it won't show up on this budget or next fiscal year's budget because that's at least three years, three to four years out.
Well, I, we need to start putting money into it.
Right, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying it's not necessarily gonna show in these line items, but we will note that here and then we'll put, add that into a description.
I'd rather you put sixty in and only give ten for the cash for grass. Just as a counter, a counter...
I was gonna put twenty-five into cash for grass.
Yeah, I think the cash, it benefits the aesthetics of the city. Everyone that's done that in their, did you share?
If you wanna...
I, I did it, I, I did it.
I know, your yard's beautiful.
I did, I just, um...
Did you use the program?
I absolutely did use the program.
I've tried to talk to my husband.
Yeah, okay, sure.
I mean, I like your sixty thousand. I think we need, the twenty thousand for a conceptual plan is good, but it's not gonna really move, kick the can down the road. We need to do something. And I'd like, I'd like to put at least fifty thousand into actual building.
No, I, I think what I, what I, what I want...
I like your sixty thousand.
No, that's fine, I, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I mean, you did a good job pulling for, from, but, all that comes out of general fund, so I just...
The total that we...
What has me the most worried is that if we...
This is the total for...
If the water, if the water problem doesn't fix itself, then we're, we're, we're gonna be pulling from everywhere to, you know, we're, we're begging every, we're pulling Peter and Paul and Mary to pay water.
I get that.
Yeah, so...
I get that. I just, I don't, I, you know, fifty thousand is kind of a drop in the bucket, but if...
I think we should, I think we should do it while we can, I, I'm game.
And, and if we, if we, if water gets so horrible, water and wastewater, then we're gonna have to start pulling from CIP projects. I mean, we're just gonna have to.
No, no, okay, that's a good point, too. Is the, is the fees, is the twenty grand, will that cover in an expeditious manner the feasibility study?
Will that cover the feasibility study in expeditious manner? She's gonna answer it.
It's just an estimate right now at this point. But we could try to make it work and see how, as far as it can take.
Do you, do you need more, that's what I'm asking.
Well, we have twenty thousand this year, or the first year, and then we have twenty thousand the next fiscal year. It's not going to be...
Alright.
Coming from measure A.
Oh, that's all measure A money? No, that's, that's general...
That's from LTF, that's our bikes and ped, oh two seven.
That's from our, by reserve funds, which is a combination of measure A and LTF.
Okay. Okay, if, if, I, I agree with Madam Mayor that we should, we, we need to kickstart that, so if, that's what, so I'm trying to ask. What is the methodology to kickstart it? With the, with the acknowledgement that we need to budget appropriately for the construction of the project and we'll do that with Madam Mayor's suggestion, is the twenty thousand dollars enough to get the ball a-rolling?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, peace.
I'm just gonna add that what we'll do, should the fifty thousand get approved by council tonight, so that we will in this budget transfer from the general fund to LTF, bikes and ped, so that will be in there as a reserve amount.
That's fine.
Thank you.
But it'll be allocated on the five-year line?
Yeah, we won't spend more than twenty because that's all we're budgeting expenditure-wise, but you, but this is going in as, as money in that fund as sort of a reserve, a saving.
For construction.
Yeah, but you're gonna put it on the oh nine two tac, tac two zero nine line?
Yeah, it's gonna, in the future years, in the future years, right.
Again, it's a five-year plan.
Two oh nine on that one.
But that's the line item I'm looking at, too.
Okay, hallelujah.
So, thank you very much. And, and the cash for grass, is everybody okay with the twenty-five thousand dollar into that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're going to keep that in the bud, in this general fund and just use the general fund and put, make a new line item?
Yeah, there was a, there was a line item that had cash for grass in it that was at a zero.
Right.
So if we could put that twenty-five there...
No, we, we did have a line item.
You did have a line item.
Yeah, there is a one.
And I forgot to bring it up during, I wanted to see how much money we've been able to...
So twenty-five thousand dollars, if we can discuss now or later, you want it operated the same way we've ran the previous cash for grass program?
Pretty much, so, yes.
Yes.
So it was seven fifty...
It's an internal control than rather than going to the route.
Right.
People were so excited to be able to do that and the yards look so nice. I'd like our green team to get together and, you know, put out, you know, maybe even a little map on certain days and give awards.
So we can have more discussion on that during that.
In Sanaria, they do awards for the best.
Yeah, they do.
So I'd, I'd like to see something like that. I want to incentivize people.
Madam Mayor, what you're talking about, the Saninaz River Trail and design, there's, there's already a hundred and fifty thousand budgeted, no?
Where are you?
I'm on page one fifty-nine. Saninaz River Trail, environmental and design. Is that just for the study mark?
No, those were the follow-on, those were the follow-on years. It's a, everything in the CH is a five-year.
It's a wish list and see if we can start it now, then it won't be, then we actually might even get it done.
Yeah, get me that, to beg, to piggyback on Councilman Kings, why is the environmental and design? Oh, environmental and design.
No, and again, we're going to, we're gonna clean that up. Those line items need to, will be Xed out from that table because it's all the same project. And member starting page, what is this, one sixty-four-ish, down where you get into project details?
You're gonna put it in there.
That's where it should go.
Perfect, and then you'll leave one solid line above.
Right.
Even better. Rose, you're getting this, it's awesome.
Mm-hmm, it really is. Now, my question about the post office, did we agree to, after fifteen years or so, to finally fix that fire alarm system or are we just putting that twenty thousand in there? Well, why, why are we, after fifteen years?
They may, they put in a service request to us to repair the fire system that was there, so...
And that's part of our contract for us to do.
And, and you're up to bid on that now or...
I have the cost estimates already for that work. And so I just made sure to just put it in the budget and we'll do it...
I just remember being told that city and post office, kind of like our door issue, since there was a water damage to the fire alarm system that knocked it out before I even got there, that the post office says it's the city's responsibility and the city says, no, it was inside the building, so it's your responsibility and thank God the building hasn't burnt down yet, but...
Right, that one's a little bit more clear as far as, because that was an existing...
I, I was just curious and I, I should have talked to you and not even wasted time here, but I was just curious.
No problem.
Does anybody have any other CIP issues?
I have a, just on the topic of, just still tweaking this, just a recommendation. And I, this is way better, like I, like I, like I commented earlier. Rose, for some of the major enhancements that's really digging into the reserves, and I, can, can we, I, I'm just getting worried that the water problem isn't going to solve itself. Is there any way you could just mark these as a, like a triage priority? Because there's like, you know, there's significant amounts of funds going into enhancements and I'm not saying they shouldn't be done, but I think it would be good to know when I'm looking at this budget is, hey, you're, I don't know, where was some of these, sorry, let me get there.
So all, all the projects I have listed for water and wastewater are not enhancements?
I, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean enhancements.
Okay.
I'm talking about repair. So like what I'm trying to get at is, is the, is the WT booster reliability repair more or less improvement than WT facilities improvement, right? If, if we have to cut a hundred thousand dollars, which one would you rather us cut? I'd like there to be a, just a prioritization.
Right, and I think it's not, it's budgeted out.
What I think you're asking, correct me if I'm wrong, under priority requirement, when we say maintenance, if you want a triage of, if it's number one maintenance, number two maintenance or number three?
I don't even care, you could even have a critical, a high, medium, low.
What I meant, but I mean...
Sure, I, I don't care.
A numbered order.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get a numbered order, that's a nightmare, right? I just, just, I've done that before, it's a losing, it's a losing game. Like medium, high, low, critical, high, medium, low, whatever, something, something that makes sense to everybody. So that way, when we actually have to make hard decisions, I know that that sewer line thing is in critical condition and we cannot cut that from the budget. and we cannot cut that from the budget. Like, I, you know, I think that'll probably take you five minutes just to add a one, one order to each one of these priority requirements.
From five star down to one.
Is that doable, Rose?
Yeah, we can work on that.
Okay, is that? You love it, Rose, you love it. You love it.
Okay.
And I see where you're coming from.
Yeah, I understand.
This needs to be done right now.
Does anybody else have any, any other questions, any other suggestions, is there anything else, or, or would somebody like to make?
I'm still a little wrapped around the $260,000 for the park, I, I don't remember, it, is that, is that truly just to add the concrete and the tot lots, and that's the city's contribution?
No, I can, I, I have all the backup information in the staff reports for, for that, so I can pull those for you, and then we can go over it, or I can forward them to you, so we can-
Okay, and then, one more question, just while we're on this talk, the topic of the, the trail conceptual plan, just, maybe that's not for the budget, I guess I could leave it for comments, but we were talking about it, what is that, what's the, what is just the process for execution of that?
Well, if it, it's budgeted for next fiscal year, so, um, as soon as staff is able, we can start talking to potential consultants, um, we'll have a manager's meeting to discuss how we're gonna move forward with that, and what the potential consultants are available to do that type of-
Yeah, so once it's budgeted, we've gotten the go-ahead from council to start the process.
Oh, yeah, got it, what I'm asking is there, is there, is that gonna go under one of the task forces, is that gonna go to planning, department, planning commission? What's the assumed way forward, or have you not gotten there yet?
We're not quite there yet.
Got it.
Okay, so-
If, if you could bring that up next time, when you do get there, if you could bring it up.
I have one addition, if, if, just, I'll, I'll make one more case, since we did save on the planning director salary that I wasn't aware we were doing, that maybe we could budget for the partitions and finance from 2,500 to 4,000, and get that down, so we can get, get them both there.
I would be willing to look at that mid-year.
So we'll do one, and then look at the second one in, in mid-year?
I'm, I'm okay with, it's two grand, I'm, I'm, it's, people work for-
Right now, it's 25, huh?
I don't know, I, I, I'm game to, I'm game to give the extra two grand, so it's between I and Dave.
And I'm negotiating right now. And I haven't gotten a no yet, so you gotta negotiate till you get a no.
I'm, I'm ready to, to look at it mid-year, but there's three of you, and if you guys are up for it, then, you know, that's totally, instead of 2,500 for the finance department's partitions, to bump it up to 4,000.
Well, I think that's for the office, right, Linda, isn't it?
Main office.
Main office, right.
Finance. So that's totally, you guys-
I'd be willing to do that myself.
Okay, so 4,000 for that.
Thank you very much.
And, and I know we're about ready to make a motion, but since we only have one resident who bothered to come in-
Madam Mayor, sorry to interrupt, we have one question that's really important that we're not, we're a bit confused on, so we wanna straighten it out.
So we had discussed the vehicles, and the vehicle replacements are located in this capital improvement, so, per your direction, we're going to-
You know, I just, I think we could spend more money repairing them, we're, we're looking at a lot of capital improvements, and I don't think that that's a high priority.
Okay, that's fine.
And that's from water and wastewater, so we'll reduce that in those funds.
Honestly, that would help.
Yeah, that will, yeah, that will be jumped.
Not a problem.
And, uh-
Do we wanna throw something in to fix those?
We do have a vehicle maintenance budget line item already.
Is it enough, though, to offset, I think he's asking, right, is that another?
If we need, if we're getting close, you know, we, we can come back to council.
Thank you, and I had, we, our audience has one quick question, and I know it's not, um, kosher, but-
Thank you, Mayor Sear. It was, under the capital improvements, the street and sidewalk improvements for the, um, Avenue of Flags pedestrian path improvements?
Which page, Peggy?
Item number and page?
Yes, page 164.
164.
It just has $50,000 for that, is that, is, that's the midway in between on the second?
Yes, so this is part of the, the funds for our road maintenance project we awarded last, uh, last meeting.
We approved the contract to have a bunch of roads improvements done, and part of it was the pathway in that little area near the memorial and whatnot.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what that is.
Okay, thank you.
That's what that is, alrighty, so we've been through the budget, uh, does anybody wanna make a motion?
Madam Mayor, they're gonna have to bring them back to us, right? Are you gonna have to bring them back to us, or are you just gonna make the changes?
We'll make the changes, and then we'll get, we'll give you a copy, so you'll get the, a final copy.
Yeah, you can make the resol, the motion with all the changes that the council brought up, and then you'll get the final budget, uh, once we make those changes.
I'll make motion approve, in a second.
And in your, in your description, then, you're gonna show the, the math on-
Where the cuts are.
Yes, yes.
We just need totals, you don't, I mean, you'll make them where they are-
Right.
But for the cover page, it's-
You'll, you'll see how much it's, we'll change that on our message, our budget message.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I ask one more question? Is it possible to, to, does it give me, if it's a lot of work, don't do it, but just say what it was and what it was changed to, is that, is that too difficult?
No, we, we have, we have-
What the original proposal was and what it, it became.
We'll, we'll probably give you something separate from the budget, because in, within the budget, we probably won't put that, but we, we can give you, um, something that'd be very clear, so that you can see, yeah, what they're wearing, what it is.
Definitely a real call.
Thank you.
Linda?
Okay, Councilmember Rife.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
And Mayor Sear.
Aye, and thank you all very much for the hard work, and I appreciate the patience, I should've had that done at the last moment, so.
Good work by staff, and staff should work by you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to business item number five, resolution number 17-06, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, approving the CalPERS exception to the 180-day wait period pursuant to Government Code Section 752256, and, um, let's see, I just lost my space, and 21224, Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, as you know, Carolyn Galloway Cooper is going to be retiring at the end of June, and she's been training Chanel Samora for about the past four or five months, uh, we'd like that mentorship to continue on, um, that is difficult to do through CalPERS, so we've, uh, worked with them, made sure we got our ordinance in place, as well as supporting documents, um, it has been approved by CalPERS prior to bringing it to you, uh, this will allow the transfer of knowledge to continue to happen, um, and, uh, appropriately through a CalPERS, so that the city is not penalized, and neither is the retiree, that's very important, there's so many rules that they've put in place, 'cause basically they do not want retirees, new tenants, uh, working after they retire, and double-dipping, so, uh, they require this, uh, resolution to be in place and sent to them, um, we have allocated 500 hours, um, we can allocate up to 960, but we did not think we'd need that much, frankly, I don't think we're gonna need 500, um, Chanel is doing an excellent job, um, I did call Tyler and find out that she passed both of the certifications for utility billing, as well as cashiering, which she's only one of two that has done that, because their hours are so extreme in, in doing, um, I believe, the utility billing, that took so much time, so, uh, anyway, she, we feel she's gonna do great, but to have that safety net of, of Carolyn as a backup in the event she needs it, we'd like to have that in place, and we will not go past the 500 hours that we have proposed.
Okay.
Which is the 26,995, um-
And if it goes over 500, it comes back to council?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't expect that we're even gonna hit 500, um, she will be working partly in the office, partly from home, she will have full access, um, to our systems, as well as email, and, um, it, this cannot, that's one of the requirements, requirements, is it cannot be a permanent part-time position, it can only be for a limited duration of time, at a certain hourly rate, all that is outlined in the staff report, um, so we, uh, need to adhere to all of their rules very strictly, which we will do, um, and I do not expect it to get, probably get near 500 hours, so.
Alrighty, thank you, any questions for Linda first? I'd open it up to the public, I don't see any comment slips, I'm closing the public comment period, bringing it back to council, does anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'm moved to approve, in a second.
Okay, and Councilmember King.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
Councilmember Rife.
Aye.
And Mayor Sear.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to city managers' report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you look in the back, there's a little paver.
Oh, that's what that is, cool.
A big paver for our, our local resident who has moved, uh, back east, Lou Adkins, uh, we have two of those, one will be placed at the avenue and 246, and at the other end of the sidewalk by the Shell Station and 101, so, from each end, there'll be the dedication to, to Scooter Lou, who, with his pers- persistence with Caltrans and the city-
And the city council, yeah.
We got, uh, we've got that sidewalk going in, so-
Thank you very much, I didn't even see it back there, thank you.
So, we're, we're very, uh-
Thank you.
We're very pleased to put that in for him, and I've taken a picture and sent it to Kathy at the chamber, so she can forward it on, and once it gets in, then we'll take another picture and, uh, do announcements, so.
Excellent, thank you.
And we did have a little brush fire, uh, over here the, the other day, that was caused by some welding that was going on, on a adjoining property, and we had a full fire response, and a full sheriff response, and, uh, it was knocked down quite quickly, had the helicopter doing some water drops, and, uh, the golf course did their part by turning their sprinklers on, and Mike's father was out there with a hose, so, it was a good buffer between Ratchet de Marie and that area of the golf course, so there was never any danger to the homes, and, and fire was, was on it immediately.
Specifically, was it the prop, part of the 18 acres for where the timeshares were going to be?
Yes, it was a Ratchet Club property, but that wasn't where the welding was going on, that was on the property towards Industrial Way, that's who was, yeah, that's-
Loose.
Yeah, that's, that's who was doing the welding, and they sparked the fire, and the wind was going in that direction, so it just shot across the property, so, a little excitement for the town, but, uh, nobody was in, in real danger of, uh, any issues such as that, and, um, do we have any, uh, update on the bike lanes for the project going to the east?
I do, um, staff met with Caltrans staff last Friday to discuss general thoughts on the striping, on the west end here, we're, we're pretty good to go with the areas of what we had proposed, um, they had some other comments, which we recently just received, I think, yesterday, so, so we have staff working on those, on the east side, there's a lot of more restrictive areas, um, that's not gonna accommodate, um, bike lanes, so we had proposed just minimal on areas that may have a shoulder, that all we have to do is put a bicycle feature, now, Caltrans is saying that some of those areas, particularly the areas on the eastbound direction, um, will not be able to have bikeway markings regardless, because we don't have sidewalks there, and the shoulder is limited, if they put a bicycle, bicycle marking, it's designating that area specifically for bikes, instead of vehicles and pedestrians, which may have to use that area, so that's not gonna be allowed, so the area that is eligible is a small section on, on the westbound lane, kind of, um, just east of Free R to McMurray, so that's the area that is eligible, that they're going to be looking at, so we haven't gotten comments back on there, but that is the only area that we could possibly see any bicycle improvements.
Is Mr. Hecker aware of this yet?
No, I haven't spoken to him on this yet.
But we will, don't worry. And that ends my report, if you have any other questions.
Well, we talked about the knockdown, the, the reflective things that sit in the roadway for, to try to get people to, there's, there's enough room in the middle lane for cars to pass each other, unless someone's sitting right in the middle, and, and they won't move over, and we had talked about, and I, I asked Eileen-
Eileen.
Eileen, uh, and she just said, they're working on it, they were, but they needed it, the Senator, I told you about that, but can we lobby for those little things? I don't know, they don't seem to be, um, but I know they have to approve it to, to be out, we need some kind of traffic control without putting curbing.
What you're talking about now is for, to help with traffic operations in that area, and that's something separate that we need to work on, right now, this is just dealing with the slurry project that they're having, that's, we are not gonna be able to mix the, the two.
But we'll look at that, yes.
We want to say you missed the window.
No, it would have to be something separate that we would have to propose to them at, at a future time.
Alrighty, thank you very much, Mr. McEwen.
We do not have a closed session tonight, we're gonna continue this item to the next meeting.
Thank you very much, with that, I adjourn our meeting until Thursday, June 8th, be back at 6:00.
Thank you, sir.